We are now recording and webinar is live. Take it away.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the January 5th, 2022, meeting of the class, the school committee to order at 6:02 PM. Would all committee members that are present, please indicate so in roll call, Mr. Dial?
Present.
Skip right over Mrs. Caleri, sorry, Mrs. Caleri.
Present.
Mr. Kearney is not here. He is coaching one of his child's teams, so he'll be here momentarily or shortly. Mrs. Saint Ange?
Present.
And I am present Craig McClellan. So we have four out of five members present, which constitutes a quorum as of 6:03 PM. This meeting is being held virtually for the first time in a bit pursuant to the Cohasset Board of Health's strong recommendation that the town boards hold their public meetings virtually or in virtual format while we deal with the Omicron surge, at least in the beginning part of the year here. So it's no big secret. I don't personally like the virtual only format. I like where we were at before, which is the hybrid in-person virtual format, which I think is optimal. So we'll be returning that format as soon as possible, which will hopefully be the next meeting, but we'll see how where things lead. With that, we're going to enter into public comment. And as I always say, the public comment is reserved for for points, discussion, concerns, questions related to items that are not on the agenda tonight. So this would include masking COVID safety measures, which Dr. Sullivan and I in the school committee have been fielding a fair amount of emails related to. So I would imagine that there may be some that are that are watching that may have some questions or comments related to that. That item's not on the agenda. So if you want to make a comment or or raise a point about masking or COVID safety measures tonight, now would be the time to do so, public comment. So I'm going to invite anyone that would like to do that, to use the Q and A feature through Zoom to do that. We've already got one. We'll start. We'll start with the first comment. Remember that you need to state your full name and your address just for the record. So our our committee secretary can make our minutes and note your residential address. I sometimes neglect to say that, so I want to remind everyone of that. So we'll start with a comment. Hopefully, as we do this, other people have an opportunity to chime in if they should so wish. The first comment comes from Mr. David Martin, who, Mr. Martin, if you could just chime back in with your residential address at some point, that would be helpful. He states and or asks, following some very disturbing email communications with Craig McClellan, could the school committee please explain the process involved with the decision to refuse to implement a temporary mask mandate at the high school in the face of record COVID infection rates by the most infection infectious variant of the entire pandemic? This decision appears catastrophically out of touch and blind to the reality of the current local, national, and global situation. Can the committee confirm that this decision was made by the entire committee? Could they also indicate what experience and resources they employed, which they feel allowed them to unilaterally ignore the recommendations of the Cohasset Board of Health? I don't know if anyone else wants to, Mr. Martin characterized my communications with him, which were over email and which I dedicated a lot of effort to and time to as disturbing. So I don't know if someone wants to answer this for him, and he's chimed in with his address, which is 158 Lambert Lane. Thank you very much, Mr. Martin. I know if anyone else wants, I think he's looking for maybe some comments from someone other than me.
I can maybe begin to address that. But what I will say, Mr. Martin, is I I think the school committee elected to apply for an exemption of the mandate for Cohasset High School and and then thereafter the middle school based on Desi and the mass DPHs approval of an 80% vaccination threshold. At the time that we did that, this variant was not circulating at a rapid rate. That is true. I can only speak for myself and say that I share your concern about this variant. What I think we are hesitant to do is to go, well, what I am hesitant to do is to go back and forth and back and forth and back and forth. And while we didn't decide specifically, because you would have been privy to those deliberations and conversations, because that would take place in open meeting. We didn't refuse to implement a mask mandate. What we have not done is specifically revisit this item on an agenda. I think that if there is an appetite for that, you know, that's a discussion that we can have. But I, but that is my understanding as to what's happened thus far. We've just decided, we didn't decide anything, actually. We've just like not had further deliberation on this topic as of yet. And I think it's important, while it may not be a comforting point to make to everyone, I think it's important to remember that what this does is it, what what the current policy states is that those who are vaccinated can choose not to wear a mask in the high school currently. And it definitely does not prohibit people from wearing masks. And I think that's probably, I'll leave it to my colleagues if they have more to say.
I also want to just add in, I forgot to say this, the sort of outset is each household has three comments. It has a three comment limit. So because we can't be inundated with, you know, five, six, seven, eight comments, basically verbalizing the same sort of thoughts in different words. And we implemented this policy months ago, and so that's going to hold. So whatever questions, if you want to reserve for a follow-up comment, remark, whatever, that's fine. It's three separate entries in the Q and A. And if you try and circumvent that by by sort of breaking it into paragraphs and three different questions and comments about different topics, we'll call you on that. So I just want to state that it's not particular Mr. Martin at all. I just, we have to keep these meetings running. They've been running really long with the COVID issues. So I just want to keep the meeting moving. It has nothing to do with Mr. Martin. It just, it just made me think because he just responded to what Ms. Caleri is probably thinking or saying, excuse me. I just wanted him to know that that was a policy because Mr. Martin may not have watched the meetings before. I don't know. So if anyone else wants to say anything?
Ms. Caleri addressed the issue. The decisions can't be made, and just a matter of port of order for Mr. Martin. We can't make any decisions, refusal or not refusal, without being an open meeting, which you would be invited to and noticed. And that's why we're here. So there wasn't a decision to refuse. It has not been brought before the committee to decide. And so we are, we are still subject to the decision made at our prior meeting. So that that still stands. I personally share Ms. Caleri's reticence to whip saw our schools with vastly changing requirements. And I will note that from the view of a kind of governance standpoint, we are still within the recommendations and permissions of Desi. So that guidance is certainly informed by their own views and their own science and their own expectations. And they have been very clear that they can change things when they want to. And so if they change recommendations, we will certainly listen to those and and bring those up for discussion. So that it was not necessarily a decision made by the committee not to decide. It was rather, it has not been brought to the committee to to make a decision. And so I have other thoughts, but I think that the book, the material reports of your question are really about the process. And so I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Mr. Martin followed up with a statement, for the sake of the minutes, can the committee acknowledge that they received a direct recommendation from the Board of Health to implement a short-term mandate within the last 48 hours? That is false, as far as I know. That is inaccurate. I did not receive any such mandate in the Board of Health in Cohasset. I've been in touch with them throughout this entire thing, as has Dr. Sullivan. We had a recent discussion with them. As we've all continued to collaborate and monitor the situation, not only in town, but also, you know, from our standing, the schools. I don't know where you're getting the information. It's inaccurate. We did not receive a mandate within the last 48 hours to implement short-term, you know, suspension of that relaxed masking policy for the high school. So if you have heard that and you're out there listening, that's inaccurate. Our next comment comes from Jessica Di Lorenzo of 132 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. Can you clarify that the school committee waived their policy and or recognized Desi's advisement to waive attendance policies this school year, especially as it relates to loss of credit? It appears that not all teachers are aware that Desi did share this as part of the return to learn this school year. The message has been to stay home if a student is sick or experiencing symptoms. So the mixed message to students is confusing to some. I understand the need to track attendance, but the absences, as it relates to no credit loss, should be clear to students, staff, et cetera, if you do, in fact, support Desi's advisement. Dr. Sullivan?
Yeah, I mean, Dr. Collins, you have any info on that? We can certainly talk to Principal Scott.
Yeah.
Get information out. I just don't know where we stand with our communication regarding credit. I know there's been even conversation today on the the commissioner's call. So I just don't want to retread anything here and make sure that we we get it ironed out with Principal Scott. You have any thoughts on that?
I don't. I would have to follow up with him. I agree, Dr. Sullivan.
Yeah, so we'll do that. We'll follow up Principal Scott, and we will get information out regarding to where we stand with that. Good question.
Okay, thank you. And just before we move on, I did want to address Mr. Martin's characterization of my email communications is disturbing, just in case that that's a little bit, it's a little bit indicting and maybe vague. So just want to clarify that I had what I thought was a very respectful and constructive discourse on the issue with Mr. Martins. And I am completely comfortable with him publishing those emails to anyone and everyone that he would like. So I just wanted to clarify that in case everyone was wondering what was disturbing about the email. Simply just a communication about thoughts and my emails, as I say to anyone that's ever emailed me, are always they always express my personal concerns. I can't speak on behalf of the committee. So I invite them to attend these committee meetings, which Mr. Martin, obviously, he he did the call and did. But I always just express my personal opinions, and these meetings, of course, are are for the committee to deliberate about as a whole. I don't see any further public comments, so we'll move on. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just noticed Sean Galvin had posted a question early. It's just about the semi-formal. Maybe you could read that. It's right at the top.
I don't see it. It's not on my my.
It depends on when you come in. Yeah.
I can read it aloud. Sean Galvin, 143 Fort Hill Street, Hingham. Will the Cohasset High School Winter Semi Formal Dance take place as scheduled on Friday, January 21st at Town Hall? And will masks be required, or will it take place at the high school where masks would be optional for fully vaccinated individuals?
So just to clarify, I don't want to, I don't know how much has been announced to students yet, so I don't want to say something that Principal Scott hasn't said. But I believe he'd give you permission to at least explain that where, I believe the the idea is to move it to the spring. And I think that is that that's where we're going with this. But, you know, the specifics, I just, I don't know enough of them, Mr. Galvin. And I want to make sure that Principal Scott has a chance to talk to the student body. Mercedes, I don't know if you know anything about it, if you've been told about the semi-formal yet. So but I I'm not, I don't think, speaking out of a school here, no pun intended, although I guess I did intend it, to say that we're looking to extend it to the spring. But I know that there's, there's plans afoot for that, and I want to give my high school principal the opportunity to communicate that appropriately to the students. So I'm not, I'm not answering that question directly because I don't believe that it would be appropriate to answer a question for an event that I don't think is going to happen at that time.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Mr. Galvin can always reach out directly.
Absolutely, Mr. Galvin.
And he knows, he knows everyone involved there. He's a supporter of the schools. So I don't see any other comments in public comment. So we'll move on from public comment, and we'll move right into the superintendent's report, which brings us to turn the movement of the meeting over to to Dr. Patrick Sullivan, our superintendent of schools, excuse me.
No, thank you, Chair McClellan, and Happy New Year, everyone. I hope everybody had a well-deserved break and enjoyed some family time. I certainly did. It was a nice, nice holiday for me and my family. And I recognize that, you know, unfortunately, it's still a very tough time for a lot of families. And I just want to reassert our commitment to helping everyone as they return to school. And we've been back a few days. And, you know, it's nice to see operations moving as we expected coming off of the vacation, like all aspects of our community and the schools around us, we've experienced the uptick in cases. I'm going to have an accurate count by Friday of the cases we've experienced this week. You know, we're watching it. We're fortunate that we were able to move operationally right now. We don't have the the volume of cases with our staff that have really debilitated, and I'm knocking on wood here, but that have really debilitated some other districts, as you've seen in the, in the news with Remuth High School, for instance, having to cancel and and other other schools around us having to deal with that. We're ticking along and, you know, we're doing, doing as as well as we can right now. We did, like, I believe, mostly all other school districts worked with Desi over vacation to provide our staff with KN90 at the request of of Desi, and we're thankful for that, KN95 masks and also a COVID-19 rapid antigen test. We were hopeful to provide more, but we were able to provide one for any staff who was interested in it. And it was really out of a courtesy. And I want to thank those leaders who took their time to be there to help deliver and help pick up the the tests. And then I should say that Commissioner Education, Commissioner of Education Riley today in a call with superintendents. He did indicate that a decision regarding the mask mandate, which I think all of you know extends through January 15th, will be made and communicated, whether they're going to extend it or end it, I guess. It will be communicated early next week. That that's the plan. That's what he stated today in a call with us. And I just want to say thank you for the continued hard work of our nurses, you know, who have their their work cut out for them and are doing human's work in the schools. Our staff, you know, who's really working to help our students regain their footing as they come back. And, you know, more some coming back a little late because of of contracting COVID. Working to keep them up, to keep things even and keep them supported in every way we can. And and our leadership team, I just can't, I can't possibly thank enough for the effort that they put in to really keep the ships moving, so to speak, in their, their, their particular schools. They've done great work, and I'm proud to work with them, as I am the entire staff. And then, you know, I want to thank the students and the families for following the protocols and for sticking together. I think it's through that that unity, we're going to get through this. And I believe there are better days, better days to come for all of us. Do you want to mention snow days? This this will please some and won't please others. We've been told by the commissioner that extending remote days, as we have in the past, right now is not something we can offer. So as he, I'll quote him, he said, if you need to, use your snow day. So for those of you who enjoy the good old fashioned snow days, at least the couple that we have left, the people we hit June 30th, we would be employing them should a day come up because we're not allowed to pivot to a remote day. For those of you who really can see the worth of the remote day, I I'm sorry. It's just not, not something that is a tool of mine right now and our staff to be able to use per Commissioner Riley's ruling right now. He did say that he would revisit this if we have a particularly harsh winter and, you know, we're in a situation where we have many snow days. He might revisit it, but right now he wants us to use our snow days. And then I want to update based on a request from the school committee on student activities and the activities that we've been providing students. You know, it was mentioned that there's a some worry and I think some reality that maybe students aren't as actively participating in some activities offered, whether it be in the school or in the community. And I'm happy to to report and I'll share the report that we do, we are seeing students really being involved at rates that are equivalent to what they were pre-COVID. And I think our after-school enrichment activities that we're offering, for example, we just sent our winter offerings out from Deer Hill, and we had over 100 students interested. Some really innovative clubs are showing that there's an interest, like students want to get involved and want to do things. And, you know, I'm glad to say we're offering those activities. So I'm just going to share my screen to to be able to show some of those activities. But you see that? This just kind of gives you, and the school committee has this, but I I was able to put this in a, well, my administrative assistant put this in, I can't think of it for it, in a kind of a useful format that would be able to, instead of going kind of document to document, it would be in one place. But this just shows what we've been able to offer so far in at clubs and activities and sports for each school and the amount we've had enrolled in these activities. So, you know, I'm not going to go through all of them, but you can see our acapella group, our magazine, this is at the high school, our AV club, our pep band, our robotics, best buddies, it's class buddies, debate team, drama club, Dungeons and Dragons, which is nice, diversity club, French club, green team, healthcare club, investment club, jazz band, Jinta Club, LGBTQ plus club, math team, Model UN, mindful moments, National Honor Society, Spanish Club, Student Council, yearbook. So, you know, things are alive and well and ticking in the club realm at Class at High School. And our fall sports, you can see the enrollments here. Soccer, girls' soccer, boys' soccer, girls' soccer, field hockey, football, cross-country golf, cheer. Our winter sports, well-enrolled. These are our varsity swimmers, our wrestling, our girls' basketball, boys' basketball, boys' hockey, ski, gymnastics. Very much an emerging, active situation with our middle school and the clubs being offered here. Shows you actually the faculty contact here, but our cross-country team, a very successful team, Pond Street Press, robotics club, our student council, a yearbook club, our beast mode fitness, which sounds kind of cool. Eagles, chess club, choir, Cohasset can cook, nice. Crafts, movies and snacks, green team, jazz band, photography club, inclusivity club, Dungeons and Dragons Club, again, it's active in both schools. Deer Hill is just some of the enrichments that we've had so far. Again, as a whole, another list that just came out, but yoga, all students are participating in this. It's each class actually signs up for six 45-minute sessions over the course of the year. I've seen this in action. Absolutely wonderful. Reading Rovers, talk about a stress release with our class of working dogs foundation, also a great collaboration with that excellent group to help our students. Holly Hill Farm, that's happening. It really could have been at all buildings. Principal Sullivan listed it because it is happening in all building. Our STEM workshops. That's nice. It's a 45-minute workshops over the remainder of the school year in collaboration with StemCell Robotics. Course, course has been on a hiatus. That was a decision made, but it's resuming in January. That's great. Band. You see some notes about band there. Our Arts Night is is coming back, which is always a great event. You had some other big events here, Field Day, fifth grade send-off, which we're planning, our first Lego League. And then I mentioned this, our after-school enrichment program, you can see some of the activities in here that were offered knitting, board games, cartooning, exploring coding and computers. Lego, we do, which is two separate courses and a root robotics course, journalism course, a club, I should say. And then a lot of our PSO-sponsored curriculum enrichment assemblies, we've had so many wonderful assemblies brought to us by our PSO. One of them is a Bully No More Virtual Assembly, which happened in October. You can see them here. Yama. I went to the Geography Game Show, which was absolutely fabulous with Neil Nichols. The guy literally freehand draws the the map of the world while he's teaching geography to the students. Unbelievable art and his knowledge is just incredible. Great, great lessons for the kids. All of these are wonderful. Thank you, PSO, for your efforts to bring these to our kids. Social Art Center, artists and residents programs, virtual author visits. We already did a museum field trip, which was great, to the Coxit Plymouth Museum. Virtual learning program, Lake Cycle Sea Turtles, our mystery readers, a third grade enrichment days, our community service projects. We have an anticipated spring play, which will be wonderful. We have a family yoga day that we're hoping to to put together. Remember, one of the big things in our strategic plan is family engagement. Nice when I see that. We've always done some great work with Safe Harbors, particularly at Deer Hill and Osgood with the work is mainly done because of the grant at the Middlewood High School, but we've done a lot of great work coming down and trying to think of what that was. Samantha Skunk, I remember that was a good one. And there's other activities we have with our ribbon week, Red Ribbon Week, which is a lot of good messaging. Pride Month in Juneteenth, anticipated to do work with that. Last year, we had AP students come down. The circus right now is on hiatus, and we're still looking at that, but we're holding off to see what, where we are with that one. But and then Osgood, you know, they, though they don't have quite as many formal activities, they do work very closely with our rec department. And, you know, when we are able to offer running clubs, which we hope to offer in the spring, it's always very well attended. And then our Rise Program, we usually have 15 students or so a day from from Osgood. So that was just a little bit of a recap on a request, and I wish Mr. Kearney was here because I think he actually requested it. But I'll be sure to, I shared the raw documents with him. I'll share this one with him as well. So that is, in a nutshell, the activities. I don't know, Chair McClellan, if you have any thoughts on the activities or anything you guys wanted to comment on regarding that?
I don't, but we'll go.
I think it's such a great, really well-rounded group of activities. I really want to thank the staff for and the teachers, the the people who are the grownups who are allowing students to participate in all those great activities. And and I was going to say, at the Osgood, there are no shortage of jump ropers. So.
Yeah, there's a lot that happens at Osgood, too. There are a lot of jump ropers. Mr. Dykes is a, I don't know if you've ever seen Mr. Dykes do the jump rope?
And I hear about it often.
It is like show worthy. He's very good. He's humble. He wouldn't say this, but that guy.
I don't want to embarrass him, but.
I think I already have, but he's a very good jump rope.
Thank you, Ms. Caleri. Mr. Dial?
I I agree. I think this is fantastic that the the kids are involved, and I want to expect my own personal appreciation to the teachers who do the extra mile to participate in these programs. I'll recognize they're not required to, and it really evidences a love of what they do and a love of a school and a love of our students. And so very much appreciate all that everyone is doing to make a fantastic educational environment for our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Mrs. Saint Ange?
Yeah, just say thanks to the, you know, the principals for for organizing that and then to you for putting it together into a presentation. But it's great to see everything consolidated into one spot. I think we are all aware of what our own children do or what our friends' children do. But to see the full list in one place is rather impressive. And I think our kids are really lucky to have so many opportunities. And I think our kids are really lucky to have so many opportunities in such a small town and to have so many teachers dedicating a lot of hours To prepping and running all of those activities. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. St. Orange. Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. The update.
Very much. So now as I, if I could move to our student advisor or liaison, I should say. Mercedes O'Neill and Mercedes, welcome back. Happy New Year. It was good I was able to Meet with Mercedes and the the Student Advisory Council yesterday with some leaders. Maybe we should talk a little bit about that, but Mercedes, I'll leave it to you to update on how things are going with students as you return back from from the break.
Hi, thank you so much. Um, I apologize if there's any background noise. I'm at a music conservatory right now. In the back.
Sounds good. You'll hear anything.
But everyone's getting back into the swing of things. I will say that the atmosphere at the school is a little off just because there are Some students out because of COVID, but actually a lot of students are wearing their masks even though it's not required. I'd say that the majority of students are. So that's really nice and comforting to know that the students in our community are concerned about it and are helping one another. And on the note of the clubs, I actually started the Spanish club. And we just completed a project. I found something called the Pulsera Project. And that's where people in Nicaragua and Guatemala make these bracelets and then they send it to schools. And we sell them and send all the money back to them to help with their education, feeding them and housing and clothes. Last year was our first year with them and we raised eight hundred dollars in two weeks. So this year I'll have the money report at the end of the week, but I just wanted to have a little shout out to that. And then also yesterday, our basketball team won against Avington, so that's exciting. It was sixty-six to fifty-five and I think they're one of our top rivals, so it was a nice victory to have. Also. I have a winter coat drive, so if anyone wants to send in their kids with coats and hats and gloves. There's a box in the front office of the high school and we'll be collecting until the end of January. Is there any questions anyone has for me about how it's going in school?
Any questions for Mercedes, Mrs. Caleri? Thank you, Mercedes.
Thank you so much for that wonderful update and all of the work that you're doing. Is there a specific size coat that you're looking for?
No, so all is welcome. It's all going to be donated to people in need in Woonsocket, Rhode Island. So anything is welcome.
So it can be adult adult-sized coats as well as child-sized coats.
Yep.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caleri. Mr. Dial.
Nothing from me, Mercedes. Thank you for offering your perspective. As always, it's very important for us to know the atmosphere in the schools. And so I very much appreciate your involvement with this committee.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Mrs. St. Orange.
Yeah, thank you, Mercedes. It's it's so nice to hear from you and from all the other students, you know, just as Actual eyes in the high school, what's going on and and to hear your Just report that a lot of kids are wearing masks right now is is what I had assumed would be happening, but it's nice to hear from you That that is what's going on right now. I think that, you know, we are deep enough into this pandemic that people are I have faith in the students here that they're making safe, reasonable, healthy decisions and it's Good to hear that's happening. And I'm also really impressed by your involvement, Mercedes, with projects and drives. You're a very busy woman and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. St. Orange. See Mr. Kearney coming on here to join us at six thirty-seven. Welcome, Mr. Kearney.
Hi, hi, everyone. Happy New Year.
Mercedes, I don't have any questions for you. As always, thanks for participating and taking the time out of your busy week And your night to be with us and share your insight. As always, it's a pleasure to see you. Thanks so much, Dr. Sullivan. May we may we Let Mercedes go, it being a school night?
Yeah, yes, of course. I I should add though, before she leaves, it's our plan right now to have Mercedes and Other members of our student advisory committee Back next time to talk about our strategic plan and get some student voice regarding that. So we look forward to seeing Mercedes soon, but Mercedes will certainly let you go. You're busy. You're obviously at a conservatory and Have a great night. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you so much.
All right, wonderful. Now, so if I may move on, I, the next Item in the superintendent's report is for me to share some gifts and One second. There we go. The first gift here is from our Cohasset Education Foundation. I can't thank our Cohasset Education Foundation enough. They are such an amazing group and have donated some incredible grants that were requested. And I should talk about the process here. Our their their really mission is to fund innovation and grants that are going to be Something that we can pick up as a district and move forward with. So the 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 fact that we have such a dynamic group Working with us, finding these sponsorships to further our education is incredibly appreciated. And I think the grants this cycle are very productive. I'll go over them quickly and then What I'm going to ask for is a vote to approve this gift and I don't know, Chair McClellan, if you want to do the Cross-education foundation gift and then the next gift or do them both together or want to do the one at a time?
Yes, let's do that. Let's let's so there's a few different C E F grants.
Yes.
So let's do this, all the C F at once.
Yes.
And then we'll go to the Loiter's lawn care.
Makes sense. So here are the class education, I'll read this, the class education foundation is delighted to present a check For thirty-eight thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars to fund the following grants for the two thousand and twenty-one fall application cycle. The first grant is the Deer Hill Courtyard Learn it for the Deer Hill Courtyard Learning Space. Of course, at Deer Hill, this is the large grant, twenty thousand dollars. This grant, the applicants were Principal Sullivan and Brendan Neen. The grant covers the design and landscaping of the space to maximize the use of Deer Hill Courtyard As a flexible outdoor learning space to incorporate an amphitheater, wooden benches and seating. The Deer Hill Garden, outdoor toys, plant beds and plants, as well as some maintenance equipment. It's really taking our, what I think is a beautiful courtyard to the next level, which will be a much more student-centered Learning space. We want to thank them for that. Next is the STEM integration in Deer Hill classrooms at Deer Hill School. Which is an eighty-four hundred dollar grant. This grant is to provide, it's Susie Corkum. This grant is to provide students hands-on experiences where they interact with the coding programs they write And to see how this code responds to their input, as well as providing educators opportunities to discover ways they can use technology and coding To teach standards in math and science. And this is also a grant that will help with our professional development. There's a specialist will come in to facilitate every class in Deer Hill having access to this learning. We're going to have our our teachers learning how to help students code and our students doing some coding. So it's a wonderful opportunity and this is a good example of some seed money that will help us as we explore our technology. Articulation, moving through the the grade levels. Next is student data surveys as at Class at High School. This is four thousand one hundred and five dollars. Principal Scott applied for this. This grant covers the two two school climate surveys and they are the partnership in education and resilience, which is peer. You heard a little bit of that from Principal Mills because they use it over at the middle school as well. Ballistic student assessment and the comprehensive school climate inventory to assess the school culture and climate with a view to planning. Future strategy to enhance and or refine according to themselves. Very helpful and in tune with our strategic plan. Next is screen printing materials at Class at High School, three thousand thirty-five dollars. Sarah Anthony, who is a fine arts teacher, photography teacher. This grant covers the purchase of screening materials for the commercial design elements within the art program and have a direct impact on the curriculum. This will allow students the capability to produce marketing materials or art pieces that can be used in the school community For branding and advertising and beyond. So you should see the fruits of this grant in the community as we move forward. Next is one-on-one conversations with native Spanish speakers. This is one thousand eight hundred and ninety-six and this is our foreign language teacher, Corina Nelson. This grant covers the planning and organization of conversations with native Spanish-speaking senior citizens With the A P Spanish class video chat. This is a great use of technology that we may not have used before COVID, so here's some nice lasting instructional effort. This will help students gain in confidence in Spanish as well as hearing authentic language spoken from different Latin American countries to improve the dialect and ability. It'll also further, I'm sorry, foster relationships and empathy between students and members of the senior community. Our student adjustment counselor conference attendance, all schools, this is eight hundred and fifty dollars. Our applicant was Robin Costa. She applied on behalf of all five school adjustment counselors. This grant allows all five school adjustment counselors to attend a two-day conference led by the Massachusetts School Counselor Association. Excuse me. This will allow for cross-grade level learning, collaboration and information gathering, as well as allowing the school adjustment counselors To further immerse themselves in topics including school counseling ethics, their changing roles since the pandemic And culturally sensitive counseling, as you can probably imagine. Their role is paramount, coming out of COVID and this gives them a little more support, so it's a great brand. Next is college and career learning library, Class at High School. Three hundred dollars and Allison Batista is the applicant. This grant allows C H S to develop a college and career learning library with a variety of resources to help students plan and prepare for their post-graduation process. There will be a range of brochures and literature available to help with career development, the admissions process and S A T prep. And there is a surplus amount from the last STEM grant to Mrs. Corkum that will be deducted from this grant. That's, this is just a note by the finance office and then you get some other notes down here. And we do begin the spring grant cycle in the new year and we're very excited for for those meetings To prepare for that. And I definitely want to thank Kristen Quinn, president of C E F and Ruth Steele, Chair of our Grants Committee and everyone involved with the C E F for their great efforts and helping our schools. And there is a copy of the check for thirty-eight thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars. So I would leave it to you, Chair McClellan.
Okay, are there any questions relative to any facets of this gift from the Cohasset Education Foundation? Always very generous board and supports our schools in very, very important and visible manners or ways. Any questions for Dr. Sullivan or Ms. Owen or Dr. Scollins related to the gifts, Mrs. Caleri?
No questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Caleris Dial.
No questions. It's once again, just great to see how how the the community comes together to support the schools and give our kids a great experience. So this is, this is fantastic. Thank you.
Ms. St. Orange.
No question.
Sorry about that, Ms. Kearney. I I got used to to skipping over you. Apologize. Mr. Kearney, you have any questions about the grant?
No, just the, just the comment. Thank you. I think that's just a great thing to give back to the community and it's well appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. I I just wanted to sort of highlight the the Deer Hill Courtyard Learning Space, which I think is awesome. I mean, I think that collaborative learning and you know, interesting learning spaces is one major thing that we lack in terms of resources In in some of the school facilities here in Cohasset, so You know, every little way that we can improve upon those is is exceptional and and all of these initiatives are absolutely wonderful. I'm not trying to diminish the gravity or or value of any one of them, but this in particular stood out to me. Especially as as Mr. Kearney and I continue our work on the school facilities committee and sort of evaluate the current Current condition of our schools. This is, it's it's exciting to see this and I'm glad that There's been a lot of thought put into that because I think that, you know, third, fourth or fifth grader could really benefit from Some some really versatile and interesting and engaging outdoor learning spaces that might bring a different type of learning experience to the forefront for them Might not have already otherwise been available. So thank you, as always, C E F. And I'm seeing a question come in from the president of the C E F. So I'll just read that right now. Kristen Quinn at two one nine Sawyer Street. As president of C E F, I want to say thank you to the teachers and administration that took the time to write these grants. Every grant followed our mission to fund academic excellence, especially given the environment. We very much appreciate the time put into these thoughtful grants for our students and look forward to the spring grant recommendations. Thank you, Quinn. So with that, are there any, any other discussion? If not, is there a motion on the floor to approve the C E F fall grants?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Mr. Dial. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Caleri. All in favor, roll call as we're in virtual format. Mrs. Caleri.
Hi.
Mr. Dial.
Hi.
Mr. Kearney.
Hi.
Mrs. St. Orange.
Hi.
Hi, Craig McClellan. That motion unanimously passes. The gifts are accepted. Thank you, thank you, thank you to the C E F. Thank you, Dr. Sullivan.
Thank you, and I'll move over to our next gift. I used to have gifts. This one is from Loiter's Environmental Incorporated and I will read this to you. Dear Dr. Sullivan, an appreciation of the many clients. We are privileged to serve in Cohasset. We are pleased to make this donation to the school department. Loiter's Environmental is a lawn tree and shrub care company specializing in science-based, environmentally sound approaches and attentive customer service. Contributing to your school department is a way we can give back to the class community for considering us the company of choice. I always hope that that in supporting education, other companies will join us. Please use these funds in any way you consider appropriate and the check is for fifty dollars. So thank you to Loiter's and I will leave it to you, Chair McClellan, to vote on this.
Thank you for the presentation, Dr. Sullivan. Any questions for Dr. Sullivan related to this particular gift, Mrs. Caleri?
No questions.
Mr. Dial.
Nothing here.
Mr. Kearney.
No, I know, I thank you. Yes, and no questions.
Mrs. St. Orange.
Same as Mr. Kearney. Thanks and no questions.
I echo those sentiments. Is there a motion on the floor to accept the gift from Loiter's Environmental?
So moved.
Motion's been by Mrs. Caleri. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dial. All in favor, roll call. Mrs. Caleri.
Hi.
Mr. Dial.
Hi.
Mr. Kearney.
Hi.
Mrs. St. Orange.
Hi.
Hi, Craig McClellan. That motion unanimously passes and the gift is accepted. Thank you very much to Loiter's Environmental. Thank you, Dr. Sullivan, for presenting those gifts. Does that conclude the superintendent's report for tonight?
It does. It does. Thank you.
Okay, well, before we move on to the regularly scheduled item in our agenda, which is Mrs. Rong's student services update. I wanted to ask the committee to consider, we have our transportation director, Ray Mashoshia here, Mashoshia here. How'd I do on that, Miss Mashoshia? Okay, he is here to just discuss some of these Recent bus challenges, busing challenges, transportation challenges that we've encountered in the district. This would be a otherwise known as a topic not reasonably anticipated within forty-eight hours In respect or out of respect for Mr. Mashoshia's time and all the effort he's been putting into solving this crazy challenge. I'd ask to the committee to move to Move the topics not reasonably anticipated within forty-eight hours, section the agenda up to this point in the meeting So that we can address that and Mr. Mashoshia could be dismissed and and get back to His work.
Oh, moved.
Motion's made by Mrs. Caleri. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dial. All in favor, because we're in virtual, please do a roll call. Mrs. Caleri.
Hi.
Mr. Dial.
Hi.
Mr. Kearney.
Hi.
Mrs. St. Orange.
Hi.
Hi, Craig McClellan. Motion unanimously carries. We will move that up at this point and address the transportation challenges, which I'll turn it back over to Dr. Sullivan. Sort of give it to him. So thank you, everyone, for for doing that. I appreciate that.
Thank you all for your consideration of this and First of all, I just want to start by saying, by thanking Mr. Mashoshia for his tremendous work and Also Sue Owen, who works closely with with Ray. Let me call him Ray because of this Mashoshia, I'm going to mess that up, probably messing it up now, but Ray is is has come on for Missy Parfomorse, also a difficult last name to pronounce, but As Missy retired and he's he's done a wonderful job in a very difficult time. As many of you have seen in the news. As many of you have seen in the news, there's a real bus shortage everywhere. And as you saw, National Guard being called in in some circumstances to drive buses. We, we really looking into this issue and diligently trying to go every, every length to try to fill our bus fleet so that we can provide continual bus service. We very much have appreciated that people have been flexible and have adjusted with us when we've had illness, or we've had situations beyond our control with our limited bus fleet. It's not often that we have a transportation supervisor that has to drive every single day. We have that situation with, with Ray, right now, unfortunately, we are down to, we have, we outsource our two Mecco buses to a company called Local Motion, who were not able to help us with this, and no one was able to help us at this point with getting additional drivers, because the, the bus companies are really tapped out with what they're trying to service. And as we've asked all of our local communities there in very similar circumstances, some as bad or worse off than we are. But we, we've moved to, to right now have five drivers, we have seven buses internal. And right now, starting on Monday, we're gonna have five drivers, right now we have six, but we'll be down to five. We're, we're looking to try to acquire additional drivers, we've, we've created incentives, we've posted it everywhere possible. We do have some leads, so we're hoping it's, it's not a long-term situation. But I did send out a message within just the last couple hours to the community, really deliberately showing what we need to have happen over the next few weeks anyway, we would think, to make the buses run as smoothly as possible. Chair McClellan, if it's okay, I like to share that document, just so we can go over it and then really open it up for discussion. And Ray is here along with Sue to help us sort of brainstorm with you what we might be able to do. So is it okay if I share that, Chair McClellan? Okay, I'm gonna share it. So this is what I said, and you can see the, the adjustments that we've, we've had to make. So until we have solved the current shortage, the following adjustments will continue. These, these adjustments have been in place since Monday. Our elementary students on bus three, we've been asking to please arrive at the bus stop, their regular bus stops ten minutes earlier than usual in the morning. That may delay a bit bus five in, in getting picked up in the morning. Then in the afternoon, elementary students on bus five will experience some delays in the ride home. We, we've cut that down a bit, as I understand, but we do anticipate that it could be as late as four twenty-five for a bus five to be dropped off. It, that will make, that will continue, and in addition on Monday, in addition to that, to those necessary adjustments, as we go down another driver, we are asking for the following adjustments. The middle and high school students on bus five should please be at their bus stops ten minutes earlier than usual in the morning. This facilitates some doubling back for a bus, and we'll, we'll open this up in a minute and talk about it. But next, we have elementary students on bus seven, we're asking that they arrive at their bus stops ten minutes earlier. This is again, starting on Monday. Also, we anticipate that there may be a slight delay for pickup for elementary students on bus six in the morning. Then in the afternoon, there will be a delay for elementary students on bus six in the afternoon with a last home drop off of approximately four twenty-five, although we are hopeful the drop offs may be sooner. We are taking efforts to make sure and to create positive, safe and supervised experiences for our students who may arrive a little bit earlier because of this to school, and who may be, this is particularly at the elementary level, and who may be held back just a little later in the afternoons before being able to take their bus. We're looking to make sure that they have some fun, that it's safe, that it's supervised, that it's COVID safe, and, you know, that they look at it as an experience that helps them socially, emotionally, gets them ready for the day, or, or unwinds a little bit at the end of the day. So we're, we're hoping to make those fun. So that's where we stand right now, we're really looking for anyone that may have a CDL license, we're willing to work with people to help train them, to we're really looking to, to search far and wide for any solution to, to this, because it's fragile right now. Because you can imagine, if we're down to five drivers and if one of them gets sick, that's gonna be a situation we're gonna have to problem solve quickly, and, you know, unfortunately, we do anticipate that there, there may be situations where we have to adjust and potentially cancel a bus route with, with not a lot of notice. But we're hoping we don't have to get there. And again, we do have some, some possibilities in the future, but nothing is, is in stone right now, and it's just not a great position to be in. So, stop the share there, and I'll turn it over to Ray and to Sue to add any comments. First of all, to make sure that what I presented was accurate, and i- if so, if not, clarify, and if it is, then let's, anything you want to add to this before we open it up to the committee and to the community for thoughts and ideas on what we might be able to do. I guess I'll start with Ray and then go to Sue. Oh, Ray, you're on mute.
There we go, how's that?
That's good.
All right, so the only thing I see is, I think it's Friday that we need to worry about Route Six, both the high school and middle school. I, I believe Thursday is the day that is that driver's last day.
Oh, I thought it was Friday, the, okay, so it's Thursday, okay.
Yeah, the January sixth.
So that's not the tenth, it's, so this, let me hold on a minute. So this whole thing is January sixth? No, it's January.
Pull up my calendar real quick.
So it's January seventh?
Yes.
Okay, so, so all right, so I will send a, I'll send a correction, but it stands accurate, so it's January.
Yeah, everything else is good.
Okay, all right, that's good, that's good to know, so we will, we'll shift that, I'll send that out tomorrow to make sure everybody knows, and I'll probably send it out again in the morning.
Yeah, unfortunately, a lot of moving parts with this.
There is, there, there is, and I apologize for that error, misunderstanding, so it's January seventh, okay. Okay, any other thoughts on this, Ray, as we kind of, you're, you're more of a kind of.
Well, for right now, we're, we're getting through it, we're able to, you know, get through this challenging point. Like you said earlier, if we have another driver sick, I think we can get through with one more person being out. But after, you know, if we have two that end up calling in sick, we might be in a little bit of a pickle.
And this is one of those situations where we right now don't have an answer for this. And so we're really, you know, going to the school committee for thoughts and the community for thoughts on, on what we might be able to do if this fragile structure caves in, because we have a lot of illness going around, clearly. So the possibility is, is much higher than it's been in the regular season. So Sue, you want to add anything?
Sure, I, I just want to thank Ray and the, the team of drivers for putting this all together, and they're, they're really working really hard to, to get the kids to school on time. And, you know, thank, thank you to the community for their patience. It, you know, it's, it's kind of a juggling act right now, and we're just, we're trying to figure things out as we go. We, we've been recruiting for bus drivers for almost a year now, and there's a shortage everywhere you go. When I called one bus company on Monday, and they had forty-five drivers out, so pretty much everyone's in the same boat. If there's anybody, you know, with a CDL that wants some part-time work, the six-hour day benefits included, please contact either myself or Ray in the transportation department. And thank you again.
So I guess I'd open it to the school committee for questions, thoughts, further concerns. I just wanted the whole community to know where we are right now and what we're dealing with and what we're trying to problem solve, because it's a tricky one, and we've had problem solving situations with, you know, our buses in the past, and we've been able to, to, to solve them. And I think we're doing a good job so far, I understand it's not perfect, but there is a, there is sort of a ceiling on this that I'm a little bit nervous about hitting in the current environment.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sullivan, Mrs. Cleary, any questions or comments?
I just want to thank you, Ray, for your very hard work.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
I really, this is, I, I had no idea until I was a member of school committee that finding school bus drivers is such a challenge normally, and I know that right now it's especially hard. And, and I'm, and I don't, I wish I had a solution or a suggestion, I mean, there's a shortage of truck drivers, right? There's a shortage of everything.
Yeah, of everything.
Um, so, I mean, I certainly can talk to a couple Teamsters, but I think they're probably pretty busy. But, but, you know, I mean, I think this is gonna be one of the issues that we as a community are gonna really have an opportunity to, to support each other on, maybe it's a good idea for some parents, I don't know, to just sort of be in touch with neighbors and, and be able to sort of be prepared in, you know, have some contingency plans, I don't know, I'm not a bus, a bus taker, we're walkers, so I, I don't really know, but thank you so much for all of your hard work.
Thank you.
I think, just to say, we're willing to work with people and problem solve with them if they have a, you know, a license that maybe was expired, and you know, we need to re-up that license or get you the training you need. So if there's someone out there that may have driven a bus in the past and wants to get back into it, you know, we're, we're really looking for all comers in that respect, you know. If you're, obviously, we want quality folks who are, are good drivers and are, are right for our kids, but I know there's a lot of great people out there, so any help, people can give.
Mr. Dial.
Um, I, I don't have any solutions, for, for many, many reasons. Not the least of which is I'm not a logistics person, but I, I do want to thank Dr. Sullivan and Mr. Mashosha for your transparency through this with the community. I know it's tough, and making sure people on notice that things can get difficult is, is, is the best thing here. And I'd also like to underscore for the community, it, it may not be as obvious, because, you know, you just go out and the bus comes and the bus goes. It's an incredibly complicated undertaking to get to every house for every child who's coming to school for three schools, and with, you know, the normal amount of buses that we have, and to, to be able to readjust on the fly, I think it was an incredible feat. So, Mr. Mashosha, thank you for your leadership here, Dr. Sullivan, thank you. Ms. Owen, thank you very much for, for all the help that you've done. And, and, you know, just so the community knows, we, we have been discussing, you know, alternative ways to try and attract people. We don't think we're undercompensating bus drivers. So we don't think that's an issue, it, it seems like it's just a market supply issue that's being felt everywhere. So if there is anyone who is in the community and is looking for some, some, something to do, Paul, I'm looking at you. That, you know, is, is, and you also have to have kids, you know, it's, are any solutions? You know, I think this is, as, as Ms. Cleary alluded to, this is something that I think the community might be able to help solve. So if there, if there are people out there with ideas, I'm sure Dr. Sullivan will be all ears. We want to make sure we get our kids to school as safely and efficiently as possible, so have patience and, you know, we will get, we will get, get them there.
Thank you, Mr. Dial, Mr. Keery.
Yeah, you wouldn't want me driving a bus. Ray, Sue, Pat, thank you, thank you, thank you, this has not been easy for you guys, it's something that would keep people up at night. I don't think anybody really knows the magnitude of what you guys are dealing with, and I'm glad we're being transparent and, and telling parents that it, it is what it is. In Boston, they're, they're having the, the same problems, and, you know, we're keeping the schools open, and any kind of communications that we can do is great. I, I also think that, I like what Mrs. Cleary was saying about, like, having contingency plans. If, if, God forbid, you have to drive your kids to school, that's, you know, you're just gonna, that might be the worst thing that happens, but besides that, I know that there's a good team working to make sure that our kids get to school safely. So it's, it's gonna require a lot of patience, you know, we all have, there's a lot of people out sick, and I just want you to know that we're, we're behind you, and we're gonna do whatever we gotta do as a community to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keery, Mrs. St. Ange.
Um, I wish I had a solution, I don't, I feel like, obviously, as everyone knows, like, I work in a different district, I see it there too, and I'm, I'm just impressed by, by the communication and the frequent updates and the realistic expectations that are being said. I just think that's so important for, for all of us, and perhaps helps manage kind of stress levels for those of us trying to get our kids out of the house and home at the end of the day. So if I hear of anyone, I will send them your way. If I had my license, perhaps I'd jump in a bus and do it, but, uh, sorry.
It's kind of like a bus.
Very much, same volume level, I think, in my household.
It could be.
That's awesome.
Thank you, Mrs. St. Ange. So, I, I, yeah, I think that, I'll just more directly say what I, I think Mrs. Cleary was sort of getting at, and that is, I'm, I, I, I would imagine that it's, it's, we'll be really lucky to get out of this without having a, a, a major transportation crisis on our hands here, just be, just given the amount of, of, you know, the, the sort of the transmissibility of this particular variant, and the fact that we can't, we basically really don't, we, we can't spare many bus drivers more than we already have. So we might get lucky, but I, I, what I'd like to say to the community that's watching is just be prepared to get back to driving your, your, your child to school, be willing to do that, because, because it could help. I mean, you know, I, we don't want to do it, it's happening to a lot of different districts, a lot of different organizations, as Mrs. Cleary pointed out. You know, hotels, restaurants, trucks, you know, hospitals, whatever the organization is, I mean, the, the fact, the matter is that it's so contagious, though, you know, thankfully, the vaccine seems to be really mitigating the severity of the symptoms, but nevertheless, people have to quarantine if they contract this, this Omicron, and so it's likely we're gonna have to do something and, and sort of be willing as a community to pivot a bit. And, you know, I'm certainly gonna be willing to drive my child if we need to rearrange the bus routes, but so just, just be ready, I, I think that, you know, just directly and candidly, I think everyone needs to be prepared for that day that it might come in the near future. Might not, but I think it probably will, so be ready, because it could happen if someone gets sick and, and it's the morning of, and then there might be a six thirty AM email that goes out to the school community saying transportation issues have reached critical mass here, and, you know, those on Route X are gonna need to, you know, get, get their students to school, because there's just not gonna be any other options, so just be prepared. With that, I think this is a good opportunity to just point out how demanding the education industry has been for education professionals, administrators, and, you know, not only the people on the screen, but also the other staff members in our district. And look, I, I'm not saying that our school district is perfect, it's not, we need to improve. Dr. Sullivan, Dr. Scollins have endeavored to do that in many different ways, in connection with, you know, in collaboration with their team, and they will continue to do that. We have definite room for improvement, but what we do have is, is a very dedicated leadership team that, you know, when they're on the last couple days of their holiday vacation, that a lot of people were on, you know, and, 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 you know, they're getting phone calls that are saying, hey, look, you have to deal with this very, very critical issue. And not only do you have to deal with it, you have to deal with it before you get back to work, because everyone's gonna be waiting in the bus stop at eight forty AM. Because everyone's going to be waiting in the bus stop at 8:40 a.m. or, you know, 8:00 a.m. waiting for you to pick their kid up and make sure that school is running as usual. And I think that, you know, a lot of us take that for granted. I probably would have if, if I wasn't on school committee. And I just want to point out that the, in this particular case, you know, in a specific regard, obviously, we're talking about transportation here. Mr. Mazzosha and his team absolutely rose the occasion. It was incredible. Mr. Mazzosha proved himself to be a really strong asset. Dr. Sullivan repeatedly praised him when we were talking about the issue privately and, and the entire transportation team. Ms. Owen, a lot of effort went into making what has happened, happened. So even though it's still, again, imperfect because there's some delays. It was really, really difficult to make that happen. And in a lot of personal time, when people were still home with their families, getting home, you're maybe, you know, even, you know, had traveled or different places. They're called upon to solve a really complicated issue and do that with, with effectiveness. So that everyone can rely on it. And I think that it's important that we all reflect on that and recognize that fact and thank everyone involved. No matter if you may disagree on, you know, decisions here or there, or different facets of the school, what you can be assured of is that you have a very dedicated leadership team here who is more than willing to encroach on their personal time to ensure that your child has as enjoyable experience as possible in the district. So I think we should, we should, we should recognize that. Mrs. Clary, was that an intentional hand raised there?
Yeah, I have, I think, a stupid question. Is there? It seems like it would be overly complicated, but I'm just, you know, for the sake of brainstorming. Is there a way to have like a substitute list, like people who wouldn't? It seems like the routes would be difficult to just sort of plug someone into, but if we had people who may or may not be available on a given day when there's something, you know, that we need someone on a, a certain route, like could we plug someone in if there were like a list of people who are willing to do it if they're free? Or is that just sort of like a lot of output for not a lot of return?
So they need a license.
Right, I know.
It's part of the problem. And that's kind of what we're looking for.
You're looking for substitutes. You're not looking for, well, you're looking for full-time people too, but also substitutes. Oh, okay.
Well, yes, I mean, anything. That, that's, though, that's a good point. So, you know, we'd, if there's someone that can only drive in the afternoon, we can make, we can work with that.
Yeah, I'm just thinking because like someone's who's, say, you know, a CDL licensed holding union member might be working on one day and not the next. And so if we had three of those people that were on a list that would be willing to get a phone call, I mean, that's my question. Is that silly or is that worth exploring?
I'll leave that to Ray and Sue.
No, it's not. The afternoon is, I think, more critical. In the morning, we seem to be getting everyone to school on time. I'm more concerned in the afternoons. I hate to see the kids getting home so late.
Yeah.
Although we have trimmed some time off of, we've trimmed like 10 minutes off of the kids getting home on Route 5 there to get home. They were supposed to be like 4:25. We're getting them there at 4:15. So that's a bit of improvement. So what, I guess, long-winded, yes, the afternoon is like more critical for me, I think. So if we could get someone to fill in, that would be beautiful.
And the other thing is, we just want to reiterate that safety's first, right? So, you know, we want to make sure we're getting, and I know Ray knows this, he leads this and Sue, but I just want everybody to understand we're, we're trying to make these routes as quick and efficient as possible, but not, not substituting safety. So we need to make sure that, you know, we're in that safety realm too. So just, there's a, there's a lot to it. There's a lot to it.
And so if you had someone that wasn't a school bus driver, right? But someone who had a license, would we, do you think need to or want to put an additional person, grown up, on the bus to help that person? You know what I mean?
The person that would, would need endorsements, passenger endorsement, school bus endorsements on top of their CDL. So in other words, like a, a truck driver, he can certainly drive the bus, but he needs those endorsements to do that legally.
What is an endorsement?
It's just stating, it, it's part of the licensing.
Okay.
In other words, when you're tested.
Okay.
Tested on those.
Okay, okay. Got it.
Is that a, can you give an idea of what the process is to get those endorsements? Just because there might be somebody listening out there who has a CDL license, like Ashley said, is thinking, geez, I'd like to do it, but, you know, what do I need to do to? I mean, clearly, they may have the know-how to drive the bus, but is it just experience driving a bus? And is there a ti- amount of time for the license they have to put in?
I don't think getting the endorsements is a huge problem. I, I don't know the ins and outs. But I think if we had a CDL driver, getting the endorsements would probably wouldn't take that long.
Is this something?
I'd have to look into that more cle- you know, more closely.
Something we do with DMV?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
But that's what, that's, that's a perfect example of something that we'll work with someone on to help. If you have a CDL license, you want to write, drive a bus and you go through our application process and you know, you come out as someone we want to have driving a bus, we'll work with you to try to help you with getting those endorsements. Am I correct in saying that, Ray and Sue?
Yep.
That's important to know.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clary. I just want to address two, two nice comments that came in here from the community. One from Ms. Megan Berry of 11 Tad Lane. She states, "I have no solution to the bus issue, but as a bus three parent, I want to thank Ray for getting my kids to school safely each day. In addition, Ray gave all the elementary kids a stuffed animal right before the holiday break. I thought that was so generous and it really made my kids happy. Thank you to Ray and all the other bus drivers for going above and beyond each day." Thank you, Ms. Berry. Next is a comment from Ms. Allison Bryant of 44 Howe Road. "Thank you for everything, Ray, especially for what you do for Bus 3. Is there a way to seek volunteers of parents who are willing and able to drive their kids for now, even if they're eligible to ride the bus? I know this wouldn't work for all families and maybe there aren't enough families to make, for this to make a difference, but there may be families that are able to do this, especially if there is a certain route in particular that would make a difference. It could save the hardship on someone who really needs the bus if enough people could drive. I couldn't agree more. Thank you very much, Ms. Bryant. And that may become necessary, frankly."
Yeah. And that is what we did, if you remember, when we had limited bus occupancy rules. It seems like a million years ago, but it wasn't. We had, we did send surveys out to figure out who would be able to drive. This is a little different, because it's not an occupancy, but it's a, you know, it could, it could have us, you know, get it done with four drivers instead of five, or am I correct in that, Ray and Sue?
Yeah, I mean, we could do it with four if we absolutely had to. Much more than that, it, it would be a little scary.
But I guess surveying parents might be a next step to get a, parents and guardians to get a sense for the, our flexibility if the worst-case scenario comes about.
And, Dr. Sullivan, in addition to the, to the survey, and then the, the, the comment just, just jogged a potential thought, or a thought of a potential thing we could do. Is there a way we could connect? Because there are parents who can drive kids to school and they have their parents with larger cars, suburbs. I see them all around. And then there are parents who are dual working parents and they can't drive kids and they need that bus to come. And I wonder if there's a way where we can connect parents who could volunteer in the event of, say, you know, if Bus 5 route goes away, if there's a list of volunteer parents on the Bus 5 route who would be able to pick up a couple of kids who'd be impacted by that. If we could have that information in advance and let parents connect with each other, maybe there's a way for the school to help facilitate those connections and help smooth out the impact on the community. I, I don't know what that would look like, but it may be worth using some of the tools we have as far as being able to communicate with people to, to, to get people in touch with each other.
Yeah, that's a, that's a lovely idea. There's some information providing limitations we have on that potentially, but that, that could maybe be something that a PSO or some group works on, kind of as a grassroots effort. Let's think about that, because I, I definitely want to help. And I'm just thinking about FERPA and our ability to provide information to other families.
Yes, it's, it's, it's worth doing that. And I wasn't suggesting we'd be providing any confidential information.
I know, but I'm, my wheels are turning.
But if there's a, if there's a
Love the idea.
If there's like a, a, a distribution list or something that, that, that people could create or a Facebook group, and ma- and maybe it's just, you know, it may be PSO is a better place for it, but let, let's do, think about as part of one of our contingency plans, a, a way to communicate with parents in such a way that they might be able to coordinate with, with each other.
Yes, no, that's great. And I might even be wrong about the violation of FERPA in that regard. I'd have to look at it. So it's just my thinking, I think it's great. That's a great idea. That's something we can pursue and look at as a sort of backup plan. That some people might want to invest in for sure.
All right. Well, for now, we have a plan, but let's keep on thinking about those constructive solutions to the problem that may come down the road. Again.
No pun intended.
Yes, right. No pun intended. Mr. Dial. Mr. Mazzosha, thanks. Thanks again. Thank you so much. Dr. Sullivan, would it be all right if we allow Mr. Mazzosha to leave at this point?
Oh, yes, he's got to drive like three, three or four routes tomorrow. So absolutely. Thank you for all your efforts, Ray.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Take care.
Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, well, that was the only topic not recently, it's just been within 48 hours. So we'll move on to the next regularly scheduled item, which brings us to the Student Services Update and our Director of Student Services, Mr. Barbara Swanka.
Happy New Year, everyone. Nice to see everyone again. So for my update this month, I want to go over some of the data that I typically share with you. And then I also want to tell you about some kind of new and upcoming things that we are doing in our world. So I believe that Dr. Sullivan might have something of, a screen of mine to share.
I do.
Okay.
Bear with me and low on the
Well, he's finding that what we're going to be talking about is the meetings that have been, there it is. The meetings that have been conducted within the special education department this, the month of December. We conducted 25 meetings. Out of those 25 meetings, four of them were initial evaluations, all at the elementary level. You can see there three of them, students became eligible for special education services. One did not. And the sources of those referrals were three from parents and one through the MTSS process. We conducted six reevaluations in total during the month of December, three of them at the secondary level and three at the level. There was one independent evaluation that was reviewed and we added in some testing of our own to kind of further flesh that out a little bit. And then there were 14 annual reviews, six at the secondary level and eight at the elementary level. So even though we only really had kind of three weeks during the month of December, we held 25 meetings across our district. And that is what they looked like. Thank you, Dr. Sullivan.
You're welcome.
So as you are all aware, whenever we hold any kind of a meeting within our department and paperwork goes out to families, a survey goes out as we have been talking about. So this past month's surveys that I want to share with you, 30% of those who returned the surveys strongly agreed that the school's efforts to partner with parents and the impact of special education services on families and parent participation were all very positive results. 40% of those surveys that came past month strongly agreed or agree that I just covered. So that was very good news. 30% of the surveys that came in had mixed results. And what I'm told is that while we're mostly areas where strongly agreed or agreed areas, people disagreed in the school's efforts to partner with parents, the impact of special education services on their family, teachers, administrators, and the schools in special education. So as you know, I've said, since we've been getting these surveys back, that we really take very seriously the areas in which we need to improve. So when I drilled down into and looked at what some of the issues were, it seems that while I know in terms of compliance, accommodations, modifications, and student strengths are always discussed at meetings. Families did not feel that. They disagreed. Those discussed in a way that, that they would have found helpful or, or recognized. So one of the things that I shared with my team chairs in my meeting with them this week was this information. And that, at best, myself, is that sometimes it's difficult as parents in meetings to be taking in all of this information and to be listening to the providers talking about all of these various aspects that go into the IEP for their children. And sometimes I think we go over them quickly and it's not very clear. And perhaps sometimes we don't take our time and make it very clear exactly what it is that we are talking about. So I suggested with my team chairs, and I will be in my department meetings this month, that we seriously take a look at that and make sure that parents are with us in the meetings and that they are understanding what it is that we are talking about. And that when we are talking about accommodations and modifications and student strengths, that we make it very obvious that those are the things that we're talking about and, and delve into that and see if there are any questions or concerns. Another area that came out that turned out to be an area of need were parents feeling involved or knowledgeable or confident as parents in the process. And I think too, that that can be a very hard place for parents. And I think it's important that parents really feel the support of the staff and feel very heard and feel like they know what they can do to contribute or to to feel like they are a, a really solid participating member in the process. And I think it's important that we always reach out to families and make sure that they are understanding everything and that, you know, it's, it's never, it can be very overwhelming. It's, it's never foolish to stop a meeting, to ask questions, to say that something's not being understood or to even follow up afterwards. And that we as professionals really want to take the time to ensure that we really do have families on board with us and that they, they aren't feeling like they're somehow not as fully part of the process or knowledgeable about or confident in their roles as they can be. So those are a couple of areas that we, we are going to address and slow down and make sure in our meetings that we really have families understanding and with us in all of those areas. Any questions about those kind of data points that I present every month now?
Anyone can just chime in rather than me going around.
I just have a question in terms of kind of the meeting and that, the meeting and the feedback you're getting, and I think that's totally understandable. I mean, it's so hard to process what's going on with your own child and, and also take in quite a bit of jargon when in terms of compliance. I'm wondering, Mrs. Swanka, is when families are invited to meetings, and I'm just not sure if this has shifted, is, is that invitation sent home on paper and digitally? Or just one format? Both?
Yes.
I'm just wondering if, and I'm not trying to make any more work for anybody. I'm just thinking about my own processing process. If like a Loom video could be made that, that kind of previews that information so that someone could watch it on their own time. I just think of so many times that that was provided by schools in the past year and my husband and I watched a video and thought, okay, now I get it. And I have a moment and I can think and in theory, people are asleep and I have five quiet minutes. I can watch it and pause it and rewind it. I feel like having that resource available to preview or review might be really helpful. I mean, just having an agenda. I've, I've only ever been in IEP meetings on the teacher's side of the table, but having an agenda beforehand so that someone can jot down notes or say, I didn't understand this just before walking into that room. I just think that it makes it easier to collect your thoughts and to think about what might, you might want to ask beforehand. You know, I just think there's so much you want to do. You want to get the best. Everyone at that table wants the best for that child. But those of us who have done testing and observations and had them in the classroom have had so much more time to process that and write it into a report. And a parent hasn't necessarily had that chance. So like a digital pre-presentation and then pre-presentation and then agenda, just so that they can have that thinking time and space might be a helpful tool.
I like those ideas. Thank you very much, Ms. Sanjage. I particularly like the idea of the Loom video. I know that in addition to getting digital and or hard copy invitations, a phone call also goes out to kind of, you know, set the meeting and to, you know, apprise parents of, you know, and and paperwork goes out as well in terms of, you know, what is feedback that they want to give us about their student? What are some of their parent concerns? Those kinds of things. And oftentimes agendas are used in meetings. So yeah, I really like all of those ideas about kind of, you know, firming that up and and leading with that a little bit before the meeting ever takes place.
Yeah, I feel like just having that pacing and uniformity and compliance is so important. Yeah, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, so that portion of Mr. Suwanka's update. Okay, Suwanka.
Yes. So a couple of other things that I just wanted to highlight. One of the things that was started before me, before certainly before COVID by Dr. Scollins was an MTSS task force. And then, like we say about everything these days, and then COVID. And so that has been revitalized. Dr. Scollins and I, as you all know, work very closely together. And I took the the original group of people. I opened it up district wide, actually. Actually, I I think I might have invited all of you. I think I sent it out to everyone in the district. If anyone was interested in our MTSS task force through a group email that inadvertently, I think, included absolutely everyone. And we got some very nice results from that. Some people who were on the original task force joined, some people who were not joined in for this new one. And just so everyone knows, you know, MTSS is our system of tiered supports for students. And we really are looking at making it much more robust as well as making some nice vertical and horizontal alignments in that process so that there's good sharing between grades and between schools. And everyone has some degree, not a hundred percent, because levels are different from each other, but some degree of uniformity. So that there's there's just some real, you know, transparency and comprehensiveness in what we do for children all the way up from pre-K to twelve. So we held our first MTSS task force meeting on December twenty first. It it was a combination of general educators and special education staff, administrators and teachers. Every school was represented. There were both elementary and secondary people there. School, the representation came from the school psychologists, reading and math specialists, general education teachers, special education teachers, therapists, behaviorists, counselors, administrators. It was a really nice, robust group of people and a very excited group of people to really kind of begin this work and talk about you know, what they see as helpful, what they see as, as I said at the very beginning of the meeting, the good work that's already being done, but memorializing it in a way so everyone recognizes what it is. And really taking a look at our district accommodation plan and looking at all of the supports that we offer to students and looking at them within the various tiers in which they may kind of fit, if you will. And for, you know, December forty twenty first, everyone was pretty excited to be together and talking about this and doing this work. So we are meeting on the third Tuesday of every month moving forward. And it's just a very engaged group of people, and I'm really happy that we are doing this work together. And, you know, it certainly solidly falls within the scope of student services, not necessarily within the special education realm, but as that precursor, because all of those pre-referral activities, if a student should come to a referral, are really important to know to know what's been done, what's worked, what hasn't worked, and where are we? And to do that in a really meaningful and memorialized way is very important. So so I'm very excited about this work and and I'm very pleased to be working with such an exuberant group of people to do it. So does anyone have any questions about that task force or what we are doing with that?
Being non-Mister Suwanka, continue.
And our last piece that I wanted to share with you was around our half-day PD days. Last month and this month, we had half-day PD days. And certainly, we always offer, you know, some really nice professional development to all of our staff. But one of the focus areas that I have really had this year is paying attention to our ESPs and what kind of professional development would really be beneficial to them in the roles and the very important services that they provide to our students and targeting something really specific ahead of time in advance for them so that you know, they can they can feel like they're really benefiting from it and and that they were thought about and planned for. So this past month, we our team chairs met with the ESPs and really went over the accommodations, the modifications, the behavior plans that students are on, not in specific ways, but in general ways and what they mean. And that importance of the ESP in providing that support and the generalization of those skills sometimes from a special education setting into a general education classroom and reporting on those kinds of things back to teachers and conferencing kids about it. And it was it was very, very, I think, helpful and nice to really kind of be working very collectively and together on those things and and have a place where about midway through the year, people could, you know, revitalize themselves, ask those questions. You know, more students have had meetings come up. Sometimes things change. And really engage in some of some of the professional questions they might have about some of the work that they do, the very important work that they do with with our children. And this month, what we're looking at is we're really going to look at the communication piece in our strategic plan in our work during the PD day with our ESPs and talk about that because oftentimes they are our eyes, ears, and communication piece, whether it's between general educators and special educators or with children. And certainly things that they want to bring to teachers to share with parents and things like that. So that is our plan for the next one. And how to really help from their eyes facilitate some of that conversation because they're all working so hard every single period of every single day. And how and when do they have the opportunity to really share all of the communications that they feel are important and what is the best way to do that is going to be our focus of our January half-day PD day and our work with the ESPs. So I just kind of wanted to share that with you because they're such an integral part of our support system and and this is kind of some of the attention and the work that we're doing with them. That's everything.
Okay, that concludes the student service report. Any questions, Ms. Suwanka, before we move on?
Sorry, I'm on two computers and unmuted the wrong place. I have a couple. I just got distracted by my own child a minute ago and should have asked this earlier, but I have a couple of questions. One, when you are reporting evaluations and qual-, you know, kids who qualify for IEPs and kids who don't, is it possible to share the information that that says like how how they qualified? So obviously, we wouldn't share anything that's confidential. But I'm asking that because as we as a committee talk about what we're looking for in terms of support with reading or with math or with, you know, social emotional, like what staff would be helpful, what areas, in what areas are kids qualifying? How can we best support that with with staff as we look at our budget and look in the future and how to grow our, you know, our faculty? So I think that like specifics, obviously, whatever is legal to share.
So just, yeah, just briefly to that, I know in September I shared some percentages within each of the categories, but certainly what I can do is as as some of these meetings take place and students qualify, I can go back in and kind of adjust those percentages so we can see if they're staying in the same areas or if one is taking precedence.
I think that will be really helpful. Yeah, as the information changes, just having that data updated, I think, would be so great. I also am just curious and and I don't know if I just missed this. You had said for the MTSS task force, you had sent, you know, email out to the whole district. Is there, are there any parent representatives on that or like CPAC representatives on that? Would it be a helpful thing to have that? I don't. I'm obviously not on that task force. And I don't know. If you sent the email, I maybe skimmed it. I don't remember it, but would that be?
So I think that that could be very
Okay.
I think that that could be very helpful in the future. I think we have a lot of kind of like groundwork to do first within our own kind of, you know, what is our accommodation plan and what are tiers that are kind of like at a very educational level? And then I think as we continue to grow and develop that, yeah, getting some more participation in from the community or whatever in the future as this group kind of continues to develop and grow and grow our MTSS process, that will be a natural part of it.
Yeah, I just think that would be so nice to, you know, have that voice and involvement where appropriate, of course, like when we're talking about special education, there's so much confidential information, but you're talking about broad strokes and and structural. It's not, you know, you're not talking about a specific caseload or a specific child. So just to have that involvement also because parents talk to each other and help each other and where they may not feel, you know, we're seeing, okay, I don't feel like I understand this or I'm told how to help. That's also so nice to build in that part of the community into the school structure so that parents can see each other as a support system and and we can all just keep those open lines of communication.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanjage. And along those lines, what I was going to mention, Mr. Suwanka, is that part of the school committee's goal is to host a a public forum on student services throughout the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two academic year. And I don't know, perhaps we'll work with CPAC and making that happen. But I will be doing that hopefully soon and how we're going to roll that out. We're going to have to start planning that. Maybe we'll do that in some sort of subcommittee. And we'll talk about the ins and outs of that, where it's going to happen, how we're going to do it, how we're going to sort of advertise it so we can be assured that, you know, these people are aware of it if they'd like to attend. Might even be able to pool interest and see how many people would be would like to attend so that we can maybe more effectively pick the forum for it. But, you know, it'll be a first time that we do this, so we have to, you know, also discuss, you know, basically content and and what's going to be presented. And then, you know, obviously allow for a certain amount of time for everyone to give their input and and raise, you know, sort of have an open forum for discussion there. So when Mrs. Sanjage was saying, mentioning that before, just just sort of reiterated my thoughts that I wanted to convey. We, you know, this is on this is on the goals this year. We need to do it by the end of the school year. Probably, you know, not right now is an opportune, but maybe, you know, a little bit deeper into this semester, for lack of a better phrase. We'll do that. And, you know, we need some planning time anyway, but I just want to remind everyone that not only the school committee, but also everyone's watching that, you know, that's something we intend to do. Okay, so Mr. Suwanka, thank you as always for for attending with that report. Dr. Sullivan, I don't I don't know that, do you feel that Mr. Suwanka should stay or do you think she can? Oh, it's up to you.
Yes, but no, Mr. Suwanka, we definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you for your update. It was great.
Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the school committee section for comments, communication relative to subcommittees or liaison positions. First on the agenda in that section is the website update. I feel like this is perhaps Mrs. Coliri, maybe I'm wrong, but
Mrs. St. Ange and I.
Okay, Mrs. St. Ange and Mrs. Coliri, okay. I apologize, Mrs. St. Ange, for leaving.
Collins has been an integral part as well. So it's communication subcommittee.
Everyone, it's everyone.
Yeah. It's the communications subcommittee, and we have been meeting and discussing how to make our web-based communication more effective. And so one of the ways, and and Lisa Radden has also been meeting with us and providing fantastic input, feedback, updates. So her team has been very hard at work updating the website in general, making it more current and consistent and user-friendly. We are talking about the ways that we might be able to make it even more so. And sorry, hold on a second. Computer wire here. And we are hopeful that we'll be able to make a much more substantial part of the, like, our our school committee section of the website right now is like, basic is an understatement. So what our hope is, is that we can provide more information to the community through our page on the website that it would be similar to other resources, like if you go to the Oz Good School, right, there's there's information on the handbook, the nurse, the, you know, all the schools have more information and we don't need anything nearly that robust, but we can certainly beef up our section of the website. And so we're in the process of doing that and figuring out how best to relay information with, you know, within the confines of open meeting law. And so our thought was that we could leave this on the agenda and continue to have discussions about it to make sure that we're not getting out ahead of the committee and that everyone is comfortable with what we're going to be putting out there for the community to see. Mrs. St. Ange, what did I miss?
Um, part of what we discussed was, you know, aesthetic, like we are really hoping to get beyond the word document feel of our part of the website. And so perhaps we could have a few images or highlight, you know, the spotlights on learning that we have, I think all of us love. And perhaps we could have those segments of our recordings, you know, linked and people could access that. We also, I just think it could just be more user-friendly. So I think we're just looking to see if there's an appetite on the committee to update our portion of the website, not looking to have a back and forth, you know, people could still call us or email us. We would only discuss things as a group and public meet in, yeah, public meetings, but just to make our schedule, our updates, our spotlights on learning more accessible and user-friendly.
Any thoughts just to bring it in?
Yeah, I'll I'll offer one one thought. I like the idea of of having a website. If only to have a published place where people can find easy links to the to the virtual school committee meetings. I know before being a school community member, that was always a challenge for me. And even now, as a school community member, somebody, I can't find the the link or get to the right place. And there's so many different things. There's the Facebook link and the Zoom link and so on. So if we could have an organized spot for that where the agenda is posted, where people can can see it, that'd be that'd be great. I love the idea of having, you know, the recordings of our spotlights on learning for people who couldn't have seen that. I think it's a great, great great addition. And then also if it could be a repository for any of the materials that we can we can share, like some of the stuff that Mr. Suwanka just showed publicly here, this could also be a place to distribute that. So agree with the concern that we don't want to make this a repository for where you communicate with your school committee. But I think it's a great place where we can have some real outreach. And I know it's clear you do a I think it's a classic one-four-three post, and so not social media that gives like an outline of the of the meeting. Maybe that's something that could go on here as well. So it's so it's a centralized place. So I thank you guys for for taking the lead on this. There's lots of cool stuff that can come of it.
Yeah, and I think, you know, for instance, tonight, I was thinking it'd be so great to have that activities report in a place. I mean, I'm sure it will go somewhere else. It may or may not, but it would be great to have that report.
Also, gotta go with the navigator. I'll put it in the navigator.
Or we could link to the navigator on on the committee side as well. It's just
Oh, no, absolutely. I think that's a great idea. Didn't mean to interrupt, sorry.
Anything else?
We need to, do we need to vote as a committee to say, yes, let's go ahead and and make the, I mean, our our webpage already exists. It's a part of the class of public schools. It's just a subpage. We just wanted to make sure that there's like this public acknowledgement that we're all on the same page, the same webpage.
I think what maybe we should do, and I I think what maybe we should do, and I, we, I don't know that we talked about this process in our subcommittee meeting, but maybe what we should do is just come up with an outline of the information that we plan to supplement the page with and the committee can approve that. And then we can just like, you know, it'll be like general categorical updates. And then if anything falls outside that realm, we can have it voted on and approved. Does that sound like it makes sense?
We can do it. I don't think there's any need, frankly, to approve improvements to already existing processes. And, you know, so, I mean, but, but we could certainly do it. I mean, you know, regardless, we want to present it in open meeting, right, so that people are aware of it and we're showing what we've done. Whether we have to physically or formally approve that is, yeah, I don't think we, we do, but I doesn't, what difference does it make? I'm happy to do it.
Yeah, you, you, you thought I'd, can I, I'm glad you asked the question because it kind of jogged the wheels in my process lawyer head. You know, given that the school committee is supposed to communicate, you know, through a forum and the, you know, the chair is supposed to select the things that are going in that communication, I like the idea of us approving the form of communication. You know, they meant, you know, the minutes will be on the, the agendas will be on there and then allowing that to go forward because I think that's more than just the process, I think that's more the substance, the communication. And for us to all agree that that's what goes on there, I think, is probably prudent. Again, it's something we can, we can discuss however you'd like.
All of those things are already on our website. They're just not super easy to find, but every single thing, our schedule, our minutes, our, everything's on there already. We just want to make it so that people can find it, that's all.
Yeah, if it's, if it's already on there, then there's nothing to, there's nothing to approve, you can move things around like all, all you want. Although maybe to clean up the record, I don't know if the approval was, was, it was clear. So we might want to do that to clean up the record at a later date. I don't think it hurts, but I don't, I don't feel strongly one way or the other, to be honest.
Well, either way, why don't we refine what we're looking at and then we'll present it at a later time? And if everyone wants to make, anyone wants to make a motion, we can always second that and approve it if that's how people want to move. I'm certainly not opposed to doing that. I know that's unnecessary, but, you know, I'm sure I've done a few things that aren't necessary during these meetings.
Perfect.
Thank you, Ms. Coliri and Ms. Sanj for doing that and making those much-needed improvements to antiquated website page. Is that, is that all?
Yes.
Okay. Next, School Facilities Committee. Mr. Kearney, you can supplement anything, I'll just give a very quick update. We had a meeting last night and excuse me, we had a meeting last night where we established that there were four, so I, I don't know if you recall, the last update, we had voted to put out a bid for a request for services from a designer to, to come in and do an existing condition study at the schools, all the schools, all buildings. There were four organizations or entities that, that responded to the bid, submitted proposal. And so those four entities are going to be interviewed. And then finalists will be presented to the, and this is gonna be a fairly quick turnaround in this process. So at the next meeting, finals will be presented and approved and that existing condition study will get underway. Simultaneously, we are putting together a statement of interest for the MSBA's core program, which is the new building program. Not that, obviously, you know, I've said this time and time again, this is a community-wide decision, whether anything happens. But because of the timelines involved in the application process, it, it's basically a year from application to invitation to participate, so you don't want to lose that time, especially where it seems, it seems patently apparent to the group that at least the middle-of-high school facilities are, are very much outdated. Exactly what we will do about that is, is, I think, yet to be decided, obviously. We have a lot of steps to take before that, that decision is made, but we don't want to lose a year. And, and so we're putting that state of interest together to submit to the MSBA deadline, the submission, the application period opens on January twenty eighth, closes on April twenty eighth. So in, in, within that timeframe, we will be submitting that statement of interest and we'll be, we'll be, we'll be issuing a, our, our initial communication to the community, providing an update, I mean, I've provided updates here, here and there, and Mr. Kearney has as well. But as a group, as a school facilities committee, we're going to, obviously, it's a community-wide decision, not just school, community. And many people that might not have an interest in the schools don't watch our meetings. So we want to make sure the whole community is aware of what's going on. And we will be issuing, you know, a sort of update, the first of many, and then obviously, there'll be public forums, you know, town meetings about this, it'll be a community-wide effort. But to date, we've just been in the early gestation sort of steps and periods or, or I guess, yeah, part of this process. So there haven't been, you know, much, much by way of substantive updates, but now we're starting to sort of step into that territory. So we're gonna issue some communications to the entire community. So I don't, Mr. Kearney, if you have anything to add to that?
No, it's just exciting to see things get moved forward, which is.
Agreed. All right, any questions? No? Okay. Moving on to committee comments and, or subcommittee comments and liaison updates, I'll just go in alphabetical order, Ms. Coliri. Thank you, Ms. Coliri, Mr. Dial.
Yes, I can give an update from the Capital Facilities Committee, not to be confused with the Facilities Committee. This committee is about the facilities of the existing schools. Mr. Kearney and I had a productive meeting with Ms. Owen and Superintendent Sullivan. We've started a series of standing meetings where we'll discuss some developments on with respect to school lunches, school communications, outdoor maintenance, and other miscellaneous improvements. We're to get through the, the entire agenda. News on school lunch and food services is that we are embarking on looking at options to help improve our, our school lunches, but we can report that we have acquired a vending machine that's refrigerated. So there's a plan for that. And once that gets put into a location, that could be a place where we could serve nutritious fruits and whatnot. There has been some discussion of and looking into getting organic milks for the school and we're, we'll, we'll see where that, where that pursuit goes. On communications, the school has acquired, I think, four, is it, Ms. Owen, TV screens with a fifth to come. And those will be placed in its conspicuous areas to help guide students through their day. And there's computer software that has to be linked up, but that's a, a, a nice benefit. On the outdoor maintenance, we are embarking on a journey, I'll call it, with the DPW to clarify roles and responsibilities between the schools and the DPW with respect to maintenance of school grounds. There's some gray area there about who's responsible for what, and if a leaf falls over here, is that DPW, if it falls over there, is it school? Can you use gas equipment, can you use electric equipment? It's all more complicated than you could possibly have expected before you got into it. But we are with Superintendent Sullivan going to work with the DPW, trying to figure out a clear line of who's responsible for what and make sure that our grounds are maintained in a way that's reflective of the pride that we all feel for our schools. So that's excellent. And then the, the last one is we're still looking for some other miscellaneous improvements like touchless faucets in the bathrooms. And then another area that we're focusing on is related to busing and where we keep our buses. Right now, we have our buses in a very nice location, it's on a month-to-month lease situation. And so we want to look at, see if there's more permanent solutions that we could find. That conversation dovetails into a more strategic discussion that we've been having off and on about whether we buy or lease buses. And the current transportation questions have given us some more information on where we might want to land or lean as we consider that, that option. So those are things that are on the, on the agenda and I think we've made some, some good progress there. Mr. Kearney, anything that I, I missed or that you'd want to build on?
No, well said, it was great, it was all about facilities yesterday. And it's just nice to see that we're all communicating and and, and I'm looking forward to some of the new improvements with the cafeteria and being able to, to display what's for lunch and, you know, what, what, some of the things that are coming up in the school year, such as basketball games and all the other good stuff that goes around in the school. So to be able to communicate that message is awesome. So, yeah, it's been, it's been very productive this week and I'm glad to be part of it. And I also want to give Dr. Sullivan a shout-out for the participation report and Ms. Owen for getting back to us with all the job descriptions and we're really, I, I just felt like we got a lot done yesterday and it was very productive and I was glad to be a part of it. It was a good, very good meeting, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney, thank you, Mr. Dial. Um, moving, well, Mr. Kearney, do you have any different subcommittee positions or liaison positions to give an update about?
No, I think we covered them all.
All right. All right. Mrs. Sanj, I, I know you sort of already gave one, but do you have others?
Only very briefly, the, the survey that Mrs. Owen had filled out for the Electric Bus Company has been received. It's just a little slower in processing because of the holidays and Mrs. Bodell's been in touch with them to follow up and circle back and I expect we'll be hearing something from them within the next few weeks. So I will be sure to bring that to your attention when it arrives.
Thank you, Ms. Sanj. And to the AEC for their continued work to the benefit of the co-host community. The only update I have is that the Superintendent Eval Subcommittee will be meeting on Friday for the mid-cycle formative eval meeting. So tonight could be Doc Sullivan's last school committee meeting. That's it, that was the, that's the only, that's been scheduled, that was just scheduled, so. And that was something we needed to do. But that's all the, those are the updates I have. I have not made it to a CPAC meeting in probably a month, so I, I don't know, I have to, I have to see when the next meeting is. So that's all, those are the updates I have. Anything else that anyone thought of while I was talking about nothing? Okay, great, so we'll move on, which is, we've already, there is, there are no meeting minutes to approve. There are no reason, topics reasonably anticipated, we already did that part of the agenda, we moved it up earlier in the meeting. And we have no reason to move into executive session. So the next agenda item is motion to adjourn. Is there any? Are there any? Is there one?
Oh, so moved.
There is one. Motion made by Ms. Sanj. Is there a second?
None of us want to.
I can, by Mr. Kearney, thank you, sir. All in favor, roll call, Mrs. Coliri.
Hi.
Mr. Dial.
Hi.
Kearney.
Hi.
Mrs. Sanj.
Hi.
Hi, Craig McClellan, the motion unanimously carries and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.